And a quarm of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of August ninth, of August ninth of
Oh, sorry.
You wish you were back and arguing.
That's my ear, not Mike's.
No, that's mine. Of September thirteenth is called to order. And what we're going to do is jumble the agenda a little bit to go right to public participation. So our guests who are welcome to stay after that, by the way. But, you know, try to support your time. Appreciate your attendance.
Okay. Our first speaker is Denise Pentusco. Would you approach the table, please, and sit at the end of the table? And I'm reminding all public participants that you have five minutes to offer comments, and the board does not react to the comments while seated at the table.
Okay.
You can check your time out right here on the, I don't know how much time is left.
Okay.
We're ready whenever you are.
I'm ready. This is in regards to the model policy on the management of diabetes in the school setting. My name is Denise Pentescio, and I represent the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation here in Michigan. My son, Chris, also has diabetes. He was diagnosed with type one at the age of four.
Oh, my gosh.
On an insulin pump at six, and he is now a senior at Heartland High School. He's an honor student and varsity athlete. We, JDRF, and the parents who worked on this committee, especially Tawny Sessions, are supportive of this document. We feel it is concise, comprehensive, and outlines the team approach in keeping the students safe. All roles, all roles are outlined and identifiable. Much has changed in the landscape of diabetes management. More intensive treatments, greater self-management, and tighter controls, all to keep the child healthy and hopefully complication-free. It is our hope you will embrace this policy as a balanced approach to how parents of a child with diabetes and the school can work together to provide a safe, caring, and positive learning environment for the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim McGowan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jim McGowan. I'm the state advocacy director for the American Diabetes Association, covering nine states, including Michigan. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about what we feel is a very crucial tool in managing diabetes in the school setting. Interestingly enough, this is something that, as I got involved with the ADA twenty-two years ago, when my son was diagnosed with type one diabetes, school safety was really the first issue that I ever gotten involved with. It's something we've been working on as an association for a lot of years. We've, just recently, this summer, in our national strategic plan, have made the commitment to roll out the key principles of Safe at School in twelve new states. We currently have similar types of programs happening in, I believe it's 21 states at this time, including my home state of Minnesota, where this has worked wonderfully for the last 20 years. Great partnership with the nurses, great partnership with the schools. We see three major components to our Safe at School principles. The first is that all school staff members who have responsibility for a child with diabetes should receive training that provides a basic understanding of the disease and the child's needs, how to identify medical emergencies, and which school staff members to contact with questions or in case of an emergency. The second component goes a little bit deeper in that some children, especially younger elementary-age children, are going to need some assistance with their care. We see the school nurses, the first line of defense, obviously, for this. But in the absence of a nurse's, if a nurse isn't present or available at a certain time, we need to have other staff members who, as volunteers, are willing to step up and help with such things as blood glucose testing, insulin administration, and in the event of a low blood glucose, an emergency glucagon injection. And then the third component is that children need to be able to self-manage. As they, as they get older, they get more experienced with their disease, they need to be able, in the school setting, to do self-management. So, and, you know, do their own blood glucose testing, do an insulin injection if they need to, eat some food if they feel low. And so those are the three main components. What we like about the Michigan policy that's being presented is that all of those components are in there. Those are components that have been endorsed by multiple national organizations, including the ADA and the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, American Academy of Pediatrics, Clinical Endocrinologists, Diabetes Educators, the Dietetic Association, Children with Diabetes, the Disability Rights Education Defense Fund, the Lawson Wilkin Pediatric Endocrine Society, and the Pediatric Endocrine Nursing Society. So these are all components that are drawn from a national model called the National Diabetes Education Programs, Management of School, of Children in Schools, Diabetes in School Setting. So what you're seeing in front of you is a very thoughtful and well-crafted model for how things can happen in the school, and we very much appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sally Joy.
Good afternoon.
I'm representing Sally Joy, me, the person with diabetes for 45 years, and me, the person that works at the National Kidney Foundation of Michigan, and you're scratching your head going, "What's the Kidney Foundation got to do with all this?" My poorly managed diabetes, for about 19 years, caused my kidneys to fail, and of many other complications of diabetes are kidney failure, blindness, amputation, cardiovascular disease, heart attack, and stroke. I am so, I and the Kidney Foundation are so in favor of having these guidelines in schools to help kids at the earliest ages, when they're going to school, to get the good diabetes care they need, they deserve, to maintain their health, to save healthcare dollars in the big picture. So let's give these kids every opportunity to be as successful as they can in school, give them all the opportunity they want, they need, to measure blood sugars, eat, do what they have to do to control their diabetes from the get-go. I had none of that support when I was in school, not that that was all the cause of my bad control, but let's give these kids everything they need to maintain the control of their disease in school from the get-go, as long as they're in a school system. So I support it. I think you'll find all parents with kids that have diabetes in schools will support it, and the National Kidney Foundation of Michigan supports it because we want everybody with diabetes to be well-managed and not go on to have kidney disease and kidney failure or the other complications from diabetes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Avilia Jankowski.
As a representative of the Michigan Association of School Nurses, I am here to tell you that we are very grateful that the Michigan Department of Education is giving this issue such complete attention. The document you have developed is a testimony that you understand the issues that schools and families of diabetics are facing. We have noticed a marked increase in the number of students with diabetes in our schools at a real alarming rate. I have corresponded throughout this process between Jennifer Edsall and the members of the board for the Michigan Association of School Nurses. I think we all agree that the ideal situation would be to have a school nurse available to provide care, planning, and case management for all of these students. The fact is that Michigan is dead last in the nation for the number of school nurses to students. The other fact is that diabetic care must be precise. Even in a hospital, nurses are required to have another nurse witness their insulin dosages. The training for this school personnel to provide care to their students with diabetes must also be precise. It is our opinion that this training should be provided by one of the following three groups: the school nurse, if available, a certified diabetic educator, if available, and a licensed medical professional. Therefore, the wording in this document stating that the training may be provided by another qualified person is considered too vague by my colleagues. Many times, that other qualified person is interpreted to be the student's parents or family member. I understand that many times, parents are willing to provide this training. We encourage that parents be involved in every aspect of this training. However, it is an unfair expectation that parents be expected to provide this training for their students to be in school, and at times, that has happened. It's unfair to the parent, and it's also unfair to the school staff members who are expected to provide this training, this care for their students. By law, schools are required to provide this service, so the legal responsibility falls to the school to have adequately trained staff. In addition, there should be a certain amount of follow-up and supervision once that training is provided. Situations arise that require medical consult, and a licensed medical professional or a certified diabetic educator is the best person to objectively assess the situation. There should also be supervision to provide quality assurance that procedures are being safely followed throughout the school year. For the safety of all diabetic students, Michigan Association of School Nurses is asking that this policy define what qualified personnel is and who will supervise the trained school personnel after the training is provided. MDE currently has a policy that requires medication training to be provided by a licensed healthcare professional, and this diabetes policy is an extension of that. We are excited that the state school nurse consultant will be on board soon and are hopeful that this person will help to address these issues. In the meantime, we will be working on this problem, as well as informing legislators of the status of our state's ranking when it comes to school nursing services. We are also investigating creative options for providing those services in our state school nurse task force. Our goal is, after all, the same as yours, that all of our students are safe and healthy and in school, ready to learn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Love.
Well, we all want to improve the efficiency of education in Michigan. So how do we go about doing that? It's very simple. Start standardizing and coordinating the 750 school districts in Michigan. I talked to my superintendent in the Holly School Districts, and he made a suggestion that he had tried to bring to the attention of the management of the educational system of Michigan, and that's to standardize the financial accounting system. I told him I would present personally a letter to you, his explanation of how important this system is, to have, as he says, a consistent framework, a needless duplication of energy is being done, and we need to become more productive, and this is a crucial step to doing that goal. So I want to give each one of you copies of this letter, and ask that it be given the immediate attention, because it merits that. If we have a, any CPA can tell you that it's important to standardize your financial accounting system, failing to do that. Here's a, also, if you would give this to the phantom board member that's not here.
Governor.
That's the governor.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a very simple thing. It's something that local-controlled school systems are unable to deal with. They can't go to the next school system and say, "Hey, let's get together and coordinate our services," and by having this kind of thing, that, as I said, a CPA would mandate this kind of thing, to have all branches of the education system work together. I talked to the Bureau of Budgets about the universities. They send in 13 different forms to put down their budgets. It should be standardized, so everybody has the same system, instead of having needless waste that accomplishes nothing. The other thing I'd like to report on is, I've talked about the duties and responsibilities that are outlined in the Constitution. So I took the time to look up the website to find out what the responsibilities are of government. So I looked up the website on the executive branch, doesn't even mention the State Board of Education. It says, "Michigan's voters elect two other executive branch officials." Well, it's actually three, because the State Board of Education is elected, and it's statewide. And not only that, but they dropped out a whole sentence, so the whole thing doesn't even make sense when they talk about where the people come from through the party conventions, and the State Board of Education has no limit on their terms. So if you could, I'll pass this around, you can see what they had. Pass it this way. I did one thing and talked to the people that published the Citizens Guide, because the Citizens Guide had that same error in there. Elected officials that are representing you citizens at state level. They have a picture of Rick and Kelly and the Secretary of State and Attorney General. They didn't even mention the State Board of Education.
We pointed that out to them, but they never.
Yeah, I pointed them out to them, too, and I told them to change it, and they changed it. So in this issue.
Maybe you'll have better luck than we did.
Well, I did. It's in here.
Oh, good.
They put it in this edition.
Oh.
So you're all listed.
Thank you.
Has your terms and, I couldn't get the pictures in, though.
That's, well, keep working.
We'll get a group shot and do it that way. But I would, you need to move on and do something that's substantial. This is, be a great contribution to improving the efficiency of education in Michigan. And, you know, I don't know who you're going to respond to. I think Kent Barnes, whose idea this was, deserves an answer, and I think it deserves to be put on the agenda and set some dates to implement this.
I'll give you an answer right now. We have a standardized financial, I'm not sure what this means. We have a standardized financial accounting system.
Well, they don't, they don't have the same one.
All districts are subjected to it.
Well, they don't have one where they can share their information between one school district to the next.
But that's different than what's described here.
Okay. But that's what they, that was their complaint.
Well, you want an answer? I'm just saying, this is incorrect. Counts incorrect. We have a standardized financial accounting system.
But they, they don't have it at their level, so that, you know, you get one report.
Sorry to, you asked for an answer, and I thought rather than elongate it, I'd just answer.
Okay. Thanks. I'll get the details. I think.
Our next speaker is Mary Wood. Thank you.
My name is Mary Wood, and I live at 27533 Santa Ana in Warren, Michigan. And some new faces here, so I'm going to have to have a chance to get acquainted with everybody, and it's been a long time, and I'm happy to be back, and I will be back. I'm passing out to you copies, what I printed off from, currently, it's dated as of this past Friday, or Saturday, I believe, the ninth, which came out from the charter school website here in the department, which is updated to what's happening with the charter schools. Now, everybody here, I know, has access to this, but I don't know if you go in there very frequently to look around, since when I go in the index, I see there's a whole arms-length full of different departments and places to go and look. So having a hard copy in front of you makes it very easy to kind of flip through that and see what's actually happening with the charter school movement here in the state up to date. I've been very happy with what's been going on in the department. They've been on top of keeping this form updated, and as frequently as, like, every week or two weeks, as changes occur. But I like to just go over a few things of concern of mine. On the front page, Detroit Public Schools' new academies are listed there, and I've been watching them since they had that conversation in the springtime and through the appointment of management companies and authorizing these charters. And in this binder here, I have copied out everything that pertains to charter schools and district disappointed academies and the turnaround reform schools and the urban high schools. This is my walking filing cabinet here. When Detroit was authorizing these schools, I couldn't quite make sense of actually what format they were following, being that we now have an authorizer who is literally handpicking management companies, which seems to be a little bit up too, up close and personal, because they're not a district anymore in this case, they're actually acting in the role as an authorizer. But they're picking management companies to take over schools that they're going to authorize and then put the board in place. So in actuality, the board really doesn't have any decision-making when it comes to whether they're going to pick a management company to run the school, and do that board really have any power to eliminate that management company down the road is a big question. Wasn't quite sure if they were following the turnaround procedure or really charter schools, because there was this gray area, that it didn't seem to fit in either one of them. So that's something I'm still trying to understand, and I'm having conversation with the department about that and see, make sure we can have clarity on that. But on the second page, I want to bring out to you that there's three new National Heritage Schools that are being opened this fall, that have opened, and I have been looking into this. National Heritage always seems to get in the front of the line, and applications were submitted, I found out through my research here in the department, January of this past 2011. So pretty much, submit your application, we'll give you a charter. Wayne West Lynn is receiving the charter, South Canton Scholars Charter Academy. They closed six of their schools this past year, so now they get a National Heritage dropped in their district. So as they're trying to balance their budget, they're going to obviously lose children to this new charter. Does, did their district really warrant having a charter? That's, you know, another item of research. But, you know, I am kind of concerned as to, National Heritage now has 41 schools. We have really, in essence, again, the management companies, the management company itself, who's going in there and putting themselves down. This is not the way the charter school law is designed. And so when we have six schools being closed, National Heritage now is going to charge us taxpayers $1.3 million a year in lease for the new school that they're building. This doesn't make financial sense to me, particularly since this is coming out of the children's classroom dollars. A few other items, as I'm going to have to go quickly, just to raise your attention, is the list of the School of Excellence Conversion Schools. So since there's 12 charters on here that have now moved out from underneath the cap and they're conversion schools, this does open up the window for 12 new charters to be opened up by the universities. So some of them have been opening up this fall, a few more to be coming down the road. Further down there also is listed name changes. Very confusing when a charter, existing charter school changes its name. Try to go back and figure its history and who was what before. All of a sudden, it appears to kind of like be a new school, never heard of it before, but in reality, it's got some history to it based on its old name. Don't understand really if that's legal, but as well as changing names, again, another issue of mine is the relocation of schools and the addition of school sites. So when we're talking about the new bill that's being proposed, we in actuality are already allowing charter schools to operate out of multiple locations under one charter. And I have raised this issue with the board before, that I believe, according to our code, this is not legal. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your work.
Are there any more forms?
And I think we're stepping back a bit to item E. Would have been in the morning, it's fine for it to be now, and I would invite Laura and her team to come up. And I guess Sally's joining also. And this was a commitment I made that we're honoring today with a presentation and looking for some thinking by board members on the alternative service to teacher administrative certification and the three-tiered teacher certification. And as you know, the legislation required us, as a department, to develop alternate routes to certification for both teachers and administrators. And the staff has tried here to balance the rigor with flexibility, so that we can attract professionals who have experience in the business world, for example, or engineering world, and at the same time, want to use that expertise in the classroom, and the balance, I think, is the key. So I'll turn this over to Sally and Laura and Raja to.
So we've basically got three separate presentations that we're going to make to you. One will be on the alternative route for teacher certification, one will be on the alternative route for administrative certification, and then we'll walk through the three-tiered certification system. So Laura, you might introduce Raja.
Do we have a handout? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, as always, for having us here to present on several different things today. And Sally is going to talk about the three-tier. I'm going to talk about the alternate route for teachers, and then Raja Smart is going to give you a presentation on administrator alternate route. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. And first of all, as you know, the traditional route for teacher certification is authorized under PA 451 of 1976, as amended, and it does require the completion of a teacher preparation program at an approved teacher preparation institution. It does require major and minor. Reading courses are required by law and rules. CPR and first aid must be completed as a part of that undergraduate program or whatever that initial license program is. The candidates must pass both the basic skills and content test on the Michigan Test of Teacher Certification. There's required at least 12 weeks of student teaching, and they are required to take pedagogy coursework. The Michigan alternate route for teacher certification, or what we're calling MARTAC, is actually authorized under PA 202 of 2009, and was signed into law in January of 2010. And basically, that law does authorize the department to issue an interim teaching certificate to those individuals who are completing an alternate route program while teaching in the classroom. So that interim certificate is a valid license, which they can use to teach in the classroom. There are certain prerequisites that are outlined in the law, and these have to be met prior to enrollment in an alternate route program. They must have at least a BA degree or higher degree with a minimum of a 3.0 GPA. They must pass the basic skills test and also any content test in which they're going to be seeking endorsements for certification. The providers must be entities that have proven record of producing successful teachers in one or more states, or they must have a program that's modeled after one that has a proven record of producing successful teachers in one or more other states. We have kind of put together two different program options for alternate routes. Under the first option, it would be a collaboration with an employing school district, and the participant would be employed as a teacher under the interim teaching certificate, or they could also be employed under what we call a full-year permit, or an emergency permit if need be. Or they could also be employed under what we call an annual vocational authorization, which is used for teaching those career and technical education courses when an appropriately certificated teacher is not available. And they can teach under these options while completing the program requirements. And the second option would be for those individuals who are not employed, but they do want to make a transition to teaching, either from other careers or other degrees. And under this option, they would be required to complete the equivalent to all semester hours, field experience, and directed teaching, and they would also be required to have a mentor or coach during their field experiences. And they are, they are also required to do performance assessment using the professional standards for Michigan teachers and the profile of teacher knowledge and skills. Now, these are the program requirements that are listed. Part of the, the reading courses are part of the requirements and administrative rule for, for the elementary teachers. They have to complete six semester credit hours of reading. Secondary teachers are required to complete three semester credit hours for the initial license. CPR and first aid, they must have a field-based experience, or what we refer to as student teaching. They are also required to have a supervisor, a mentor. They are also required to have a supervisor, a mentor or coach, coaching support while they are pursuing that alternate route certification. And they must also complete pedagogy content or courses that are equivalent to at least 12 semester credit hours. They don't have to be semester credit hours, but they must be equivalent to that. The completion of the program leads to a Michigan provisional teaching certificate or if they meet requirements for a professional education certificate, they could be recommended for that certificate. And one of the stipulations in legislation or in law is that the alternate routes cannot be used for special education certification. So individuals seeking to be special education teachers would still have to complete a traditional route program.
Mike, you want to take questions now or you want to go all the way through?
I just briefly wanted to know, for the alternate route for teachers, how long can they be in this interim status?
They must teach for three years under the interim teaching certificate. That's as long as they have three years to complete that program under the interim certificate.
Well, first of all, thanks for the, I know I've asked for it several times, so I really appreciate that you guys are humoring me. But under the, on page four, under field experience student teaching required, it says that they can use, participants employed by a local district under the interim teaching certificates may use the first four weeks of employment as field experience for additional learning. And then the following page says eight additional weeks of teaching will satisfy the state's student teaching requirement. So does this take the place of, on here it says field-based experience student teaching. Are those two things the same thing?
Basically, they are. They are, the law actually refers to it as some, a form of field-based experience.
So you can be employed while you're gaining your field-based experience?
Yes. And that's the whole thing with the interim teaching certificate is that you're employed under that certificate and you're using that employment part of that as very close supervision, very strong mentoring to provide the kind of support that that person needs in the classroom.
And traditional colleges of education, though, require you to do student teaching at your own expense, correct?
Yes.
So why would anyone go through a college of education?
Well, I mean, it's the traditional route for those individuals who are seeking their first degree or want to go through teaching that way. These programs usually are designed for individuals who want to make a career change or change in their degree. They may have gotten an undergraduate degree in a science field but didn't at the time decide that they want to be a teacher. And now, you know, they want to make a change, they do really want to be in the classroom. So it's an option for those individuals. We still, even individuals who have bachelor's degrees or master's degrees, they can still pursue a teacher preparation program post BA, you know, at universities. And we have experimental routes or experimental options that are sort of shortened programs for those individuals seeking to do that.
Laura, I think Cassandra is thinking about the discussion we had one time similarly at Suits Group, and help me with it, where to not inadvertently create an incentive, not for a career changer, but for someone right out of the block. And I think the way we reconciled it in our head was that, help me with that, but to go through and get a BA degree and then, can you talk through that a little bit? It really wasn't, and it does, I think your inference, Cassandra's inference is correct that it seems that way, but I think we realize why it really wasn't that incentive.
Yeah, you're still, you still have to minimally have that bachelor's degree before you can even go into a program. So if you're going to pay for a bachelor's degree, you still might as well go ahead and do your teacher preparation program, you know. Or you're going to find out that you're going to pay, you're still going to have some expenses associated with it. These providers are not going to put you in this program for free. You will pay for that. I mean, it's, you're going to have some costs either way, but I think that your traditional-age college student, that 18 to 25-year-old college student, is still going to be doing your traditional preparation program.
Can I ask one more question? In order to get that interim certification, what are the minimum requirements you have to satisfy in order for a school to hire you and then you can do your student teaching and things like that?
Well, those are the prerequisites that are listed. You have to have...
The BA.
The BA, the minimum of a 3.0 GPA, you've got to pass the MTTC basic skills and content test.
And that's it? And then the school can hire you under an interim certification?
The provider, you've got to be, those are prerequisites to be enrolled in an alternate route program. Once you're enrolled in that program and that provider recommends you for that interim teaching certificate, then yes, you are authorized to teach in the classroom. That's why we're saying it should be a collaboration between a district and a provider because otherwise you're not going to know that that person has a job. When you build these collaborations, the district is saying, well, we may have several openings in this and we need people. And that alternate route provider could provide those teachers to that district.
Is it up to the provider to determine when you're ready to go or? There's nothing in what you're doing here that says you have to have the minimum of your 12 credit hours and then you have to, okay.
No, you don't.
One thing I probably should have said in the preamble a little bit is that we, I mean, we, in this last few years, we get a lot, particularly at this forum, that we're not a local-controlled state anymore, when of course we are. We're setting benchmarks, we're setting requirements, but how you teach, what you teach, and more importantly to this point, who you hire is totally up to the district. So I think what's going to happen, particularly with accountability being as strong as it is now, that even 20 years ago, I would, you know, I, you're still going to control the person that you hire. And if they don't really start, if they're not producing through alternative cert, the quality that districts believe is coming out of traditional cert, they won't hire them, you know. I think where it will probably be a transition period for a while is given the shortages in math and science and special ed and world language, it's compared to what right now? We don't have enough coming out of the traditional program. So if you can fill that gap, I mean, I think it's fair to say, we have folks in classrooms today that are, that are not close in terms of preparation to this, just because of the void.
Well, we, yeah, and we have people right now who go into the classroom, maybe on a full-year permit, who don't have the total preparation. And they are teaching full-time in those classrooms.
Particularly in the very schools that are called PLA lists.
And you'll see, we're recommending, you know, things like they do an orientation to teaching with these folks before you actually put them in the classroom, which if you look at the national models for alternate routes, they do require that, that you have some orientation and some of it, it could be a six-week orientation or whatever. But you're not just throwing the person into the classroom without some background, some understanding of what it takes to be a teacher, how you do lesson plans and things like that. So we are highly recommending those kinds of things to these individuals. You want them to have some, some chance for success in the classroom. And so we are putting forward some recommendations to kind of ensure that.
All right, please, then Kath.
Having been intimately acquainted with this, the appointment, your appointment and me to the Professional Standards Commission for Teachers, for which I thank you for it because I've been a lot. The only question that I had, Laura, that this is basically the template that PSDT thrashed over and came up with, I think. I know there's some changes, but we talked a lot about assessment of candidate disposition and that that was an essential piece to making sure that, what we envisioned, what the PSDT envisioned was good candidates, the guy who was the Cub Scout leader, the choir leader, but people who were really good with kids and had a bachelor's degree or more in a field. And the only thing that we worried about a little bit with PSDT was how you make sure that those candidates are good with children because you have to be to walk into this charter program. What was the logic behind making it optional? Was it not enforceable to make it required?
We couldn't require it because the law is very specific on what the requirements are and what those prerequisites are. And that candidate disposition, assessment of the dispositions was not a part of that. So that's why we can only highly recommend that.
Well, it's only for the candidate's protection because if they're not quite good enough for teaching, it would have them not pay the tuition upfront until you, everything else picked in the mentoring and the other support mechanisms.
Right.
When that would come out. So it was more of a protection for the consumer than it was for the children.
Kath, please.
Thanks, Laura, for this. Would you refresh me? I've forgotten. In addition to the colleges of education, who would the providers be?
Well, providers could be any entity that would come along and want to offer the programs. As I said, we would be approving those entities and they'd have to make sure that they do have a program that they're putting forward that meets the requirement of it being based on a model, national model that's successful or that is a national model. So those would be, providers could be ISDs, could be a local school district, could be a university. I mean, you could have any number of entities that could come in and provide programs. But they do have to go through the approval process and the application and everything. So we'll be looking at that.
We would keep a handle on who's doing this?
Yeah, they would go through a normal approval process to get, to be approved to offer the programs.
Okay, because it won't be any fly-by-night kind of operation in other words.
Right. They would have to show they have the faculty, the staff, the capacity to actually offer what they're saying they're going to offer.
There are some ISDs, Kath, along that line that have talked about maybe specializing in language, for instance, world language, because we're just not getting close to enough. And they're thinking about trying to work through this process themselves. I don't know where that stands at this point. And then again, the ultimate fail-safe is if this isn't quality, districts don't hire them. And then, can you just, Laura, again, I'm not sure I understand this correctly. Right now, in so many districts, we have the emergency, what's the terminology?
Permit.
And this is a gigantic leap above that.
Right, right. The emergency, yeah, we, the emergency permit is kind of a last resort permit that you want to use in the classroom because that person really doesn't have any kind of educational background. They just have a bachelor's degree and you're putting them in.
Excuse me a second for pushing on that. I just, do you, but your sense, I mean, my sense, and I should, I'm asking you because your sense is more informed. Do you, we have, particularly in some of our PLA schools, don't we have a fair number of emergency permits because they can't get traditionally trained teachers?
And some, and some we do. But we, what we've done is we've really tried to limit emergency permits, but we do have a fair number of what we call the full term, full, full-year permits. And those are people who do have some education coursework behind them.
But again, not, not to this standard.
Right.
So I'm trying to, when I'm trying to...
Yeah, they're still working, they could still be working. Yeah, this is more rigorous, I think, than some of those, so...
The reason, I'm sorry, I'm trying to just make the point, we already have two that are less rigorous. This is stuck in the middle here, and then we have kind of the Cadillac of, at least Cadillac of thinking that we try to get teacher prep traditional institutions. So this is sandwiched in between there. And I think, again, it gives an option to a district that they don't have now to get someone a bit better trained than those first two options.
Right.
And some might argue not as well-trained as some others.
Yeah, you may get a, you may get a person who, like, if we talk about the engineers and folks who are out of jobs because of the slow-down automobile industry, you could get a person that has very strong mathematics background, a very strong science background or language background and put them into an alternate route. And they will do probably quite well. They have the content, but what they may be lacking is some of the pedagogy, and they will get that. And that's why we're saying we're recommending that orientation and then that strong mentoring and induction and the collegiality that they would get in a teaching setting where they are supported, very well-supported.
Thank you. Kath, please.
Yeah, I think it's important that people understand that, you know, there's a perception out there among a lot of people that anybody can teach. You know, you can walk into, they talk, I remember Iacocco was talking about an engineer could walk into a room and teach. He wasn't, he couldn't be a teacher because he's not certified. Well, he probably doesn't know how to teach at elementary school or even a high school. So I think it takes a lot of training and a lot of skill and a lot of understanding of children and adolescents and it's complicated. It's not easy. And I think it's important that people understand that these folks do need adequate training and education before they can really do a job in the classroom, even though they might be good engineers. And I do think that there's a misconception among the public about the ability to teach.
Any other questions on that? We'll move to Minister of Strategic, Dan, and then...
Yeah, so I apologize, I feel like I probably just missed this. So Mike, you were explaining we've got the so-called Cadillac, or we've got option A and option B, option B being a not-at-all rigorous kind of emergency permit, so on and so forth. So my understanding of C here is that you would have to be in B, right, to qualify for C? Isn't that...
For the...
In other words, so my understa, so you've got to be either employed through one of those processes available through B, right? Or, you know, what's explained on slide six, all of the other stuff, right? In order to be, in order to get into that. So this is really, well, maybe not, okay, all right, I got it. Never mind, I talked myself through it.
Yeah, I think you're talking about if you're not employed at all, then you complete option two, which is program with student teaching and all of that stuff. So it is different, that's your third option.
Can we move to, you can ask questions still on this as we go through, but why don't we try to move to Rajah, administrative certification, alternative, and then we're going to do three-tier with Sally.
Okay, on to administrator certification. Just a quick historical perspective. PA 289, which was signed in 1995, eliminated the administrator certification requirement. Effective January 4, 2010, PA 205, which was signed in 2009, is signed into law and requires administrators to be certified, but not those who are already in those positions prior to the law being enacted. So the types of certification include building principal and central office. The requirements include prior to, excuse me, prior to PA 205, local districts establish hiring criteria. Continuing education credits every five years to continue to be employed, and that was section 1246 of the Revised School Code. So in essence, when there was no certification, there was a continuing ed requirement, which was six semester hours or 18 SBCUs every five years. Now, the traditional route for administrator certification included a completion of an approved principal preparation, which is approved against the State Board of Education standards for principal and central office. Central office was the same thing, completion of approved central office programs and included endorsements, which are a completion of approved performance-based specialty or enhanced endorsements that are offered by our state professional associations. Alternate routes for administrator certification. This was authorized by PA 205 in 2009. Certification is based on experience, alternate route preparation, or both. So you have a combination of both, you have the experience and you have alternate preparation. MDE worked with stakeholder groups to develop this process. The programs can only be offered by state-recognized professional associations, so those associations that have been established for 10 years. Now, the alternate routes for administrator certification, the programs must meet the criteria set forth by the State Board for approved administrative preparation programs. So these programs are approved against the standards. Alternate routes for administrator certification program eligibility, we have two categories. Category one, persons with a master's or a higher degree. Or category two, person with a BA degree plus at least three years of experience in management or leadership. Now, the alternate routes to administrator certification pathways, I touched on it just a little bit, but here's a little more specificity to it. The experienced pathway includes three years of PK-12, building, district, or central office administrator portfolio, no internship with submission of that portfolio. So that's a possibility. And again, these are recommended... that portfolio. So that's a possibility. And again, these are recommendations for the associations that can offer these programs. Three years of management or leadership experience in areas other than education, an internship would be required in that instance, or three years of management or leadership areas other than education. A passage of an administrator performance assessment, internship is required. So that could be some kind of assessment that the provider sets up when the candidates come in for the applicant, apply for the program. The second pathway is the alternate preparation pathway. They must meet the minimum degree requirements. Complete an alternate route program or complete the actual internship. Okay? And these are the people who need, who haven't quite met all of the standards, but they need some kind of assistance with that. They have to meet some of the standards in order to reach the certification.
So those, or, meet minimum degree requirements, or complete a-
No, for the alternate preparation, these pieces have to be met.
Oh, okay.
Third option, experience and alternate preparation. So this kind of leads into actually the question you just asked. Additional preparation needs based on assessment of a standards-based portfolio and an individualized development plan. Again, these are recommendations. We want to allow them the creativity to come up with different assessment methods.
Okay, that's it. Mike, take questions now?
Before we go to three-tier, was that, okay.
I, having worked on the standards for administrators in the regulars group, we had, I recall in there, a requirement that administrators had to teach for, I think it's three years. Is that right?
Previously for certification?
In order, in order to go to become a principal, one had to have taught for, I think it was three years.
Yeah, that was probably under the old certification and requirements in Michigan. But when you, when we're looking at these, based on the law, this is really out of the law. So the alternate route is experience or completion of an alternate route program. So that's what we were working from and trying to build what would look like good alternate route preparation programs for administrators.
And what Marianne is asking, eliminated how many years ago?
Oh, that was back in 1995, PA 289, that eliminated administrator certification.
But that, you're right, Marianne.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking, a couple of years ago, we passed the requirements for administrators. And in that was a requirement that they teach for, I believe, three years. Now, I don't see any requirements for previous classroom experience in order to become an administrator under this.
Well, yeah, actually, the current standards, they don't actually have that in the standards. Now, maybe before 2006, when the standards were written, it had that, but after 2006, we don't have that requirement in the standards.
Yeah, there's no requirement for teaching experience.
No requirement for teaching experience at all.
Just again, I feel like I'm repeating myself, but ultimately, districts are going to be smart about this. The stakes are too high. If they don't feel they're getting someone appropriately from an alternative with, especially at a principal level, if the stakes are high, they're not going to hire them. So I mean, in a way, it's keeping pressure on prep programs. And I love Jim Ballard. This isn't like a pronouncement. This, I mean, I like Jim Ballard. But I do want to say Wendy, who's the new improved Jim Ballard, and they're overlapping a little bit, I might just take the moment to introduce her since she's sitting here today. Wendy, maybe a little about your background, because I know you're interested, your organization, Secondary School Principals, is interested in this issue, if I'm not mistaken.
We are, we just are working on our submission for an application to be able to be a provider for this service. We have principals who are currently already seated that are looking for an alternate route, and so we'd just like to be able to provide that for them.
And Wendy, you come from Rochester, if I'm correct?
I do, yes. I was a principal at Rochester High School for the past seven years.
Welcome.
Thank you.
He will officially, I guess, January 1?
I'll be the associate director until Jim retires January 1, and I'll be the executive director.
Well, he's in Switzerland, so he's not going to retire. Any other on that, on that item? And again, you can come back. Dan, please.
So what are, I think, two questions, maybe. Yeah, so one, in terms of the traditional route, just quickly, what are approved principal preparation programs?
The approved principal preparation programs are programs approved against the standards for principal preparation, plain and simple. When programs come in, say a university wants to, or a TPI, rather, wants to offer a program, a principal preparation program, they submit an application to OPPS. We review the application to ensure that they're meeting all of the standards for principal preparation and/or central office.
Those standards being similar around experience, what are the standards?
They're based on the national standards for administrators that we use, and they are standards that we brought before the board.
The ISLIC standards.
ISLIC standards and got those approved. And at one point, we went to voluntary principal certification. And so a lot of principals did come in and do certification programs under those standards. And so we are using, we've updated those standards, and we're using those now to approve programs that want to offer or continue to offer administrative certification programs.
And then the follow-up is, what are state-recognized professional associations, recognized by whom?
That would be the MASA, the MASSP.
The acronym is our Michigan, Michigan Association of School Administrators, Michigan Association-
Recognized by whom? By the, by their, you know, cohort of members? I mean, what does it take to become state-recognized?
The legislative definition that's in law says that they have to have been in existence for at least 10 years and that they do serve their membership on a statewide basis. So there are a number of those associations related to administration that are housed in one building here in Lansing, and we work with them.
So I may say statewide would qualify, I don't know that they're thinking about it, middle cities would not, I think, the way that is. They have to offer statewide with all districts. Nancy?
I don't know why this didn't occur to me before, but we go through our traditional teacher preparation institutions, and I'm not sure about administrator programs within preparation institutions, and we require them to be accredited. How does that play into both, I mean, are the administrators' courses or their program at, say, University of Michigan, or Central Michigan, or MSU, or wherever it is, are those accredited just like teacher prep programs are? And are these alternative routes accredited just like those teacher prep programs are?
The teacher preparation programs, we require them to hold national accreditation. They have until 2013 to achieve that. And normally, if they have an approved administrator program, that would be a part of that review by the national accrediting body. So they would look at that whole unit and all of those programs. Now, in terms of alternate routes, we have not yet, because we are just now getting into this, we have not yet determined how they would be nationally accredited and who would accredit them, whether it would be NCA, the National Council on Teacher Education, or TX, Teacher Education. And those two have joined now, and I don't know what that acronym is now, but.
KSO. It's Y'all Come.
Yeah. So that would be an issue that we would have to look at, is are we going to require alternate route programs to also be nationally accredited? We know that we are going to build some kind of an accountability system that we would assess them on, just like we have the accountability system for our teacher preparation institution.
Here's why I ask. One of my biggest concerns, although I too love Jim, or any other organization that might want to do this, one of the things we have valued throughout time in terms of our teacher preparation institutions is the research and their ability to provide that ongoing demonstrable integration of best practice and understanding of research. And while I understand that there are a variety of ways that you might be able to do that, I think that that's something that I would still value, that these organizations be able to demonstrate, rather than solely, and not that it's unimportant, but solely relying on their experiences in the field. That's a very valuable component of it. I'm just not sure it's, of its entirety. And so I think they could do it, but I think we have to ask it of them. And so I'm just wondering if you've had any thought or any conversation with those organizations about that?
Is there a standard that they have referred to?
Right. They have to, they have to actually meet the same standards that the TPIs meet. They have to go through the same processes. They have to go through the reviews, just like the TPIs. So they have the responsibility of meeting those standards.
Okay, so that's what I was asking. That is in existence. It's just that we don't have a formal national certification that we are considering to do or not to do.
Correct.
Okay, that helps me out. Thank you very much.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
We went to three-tier.
Spend more words.
Sally on three-tier.
Okay, ready to move on to three-tier. Three-tier certification system for teachers has been talked about for a number of years. The teacher study group, a number of years ago, this is one of the recommendations. Mike has certainly seen it as a way to make sure that we've got a career ladder for teachers. So the certification system does provide a continuum of teacher development, all the way from the formal professional program through their entire career. It also does create this career ladder, and we really think it provides a way of recognizing teacher leadership by having that third tier added to the certification system. Some of the, some of the plan for that system has come through a committee that Mike convened about a year and a half or two years ago, led by both FT and EA representatives. That group spent a significant amount of time putting together some recommendations that were given to Mike. After the recommendations were submitted, we then had a flurry of legislation went through. So what we have put together is a combination of recommendations from the committee as well as reflection, so that we make sure that we've got the licensure system aligned with the new legislation. No, thank you. So the three-tiered system, the first tier is what we currently have as the provisional, second is the professional, and third would be the advanced professional. In the tier one, this is based, again, on the combination of recommendations and legislation. It was valid for five years, and the teacher receives the provisional certificate once they've completed the preparation program and have passed the Michigan test for teacher certification. It's really a focus on developing, improving, and reflecting teacher practice. We know how important those first five years are for a new teacher, to make sure that they can see how their practice is improving. Assigned to a mentor for the first three years, annual evaluations, as you know, that was a major piece of legislation that was just passed, with student achievement as a significant factor. And then finally, an individual development plan for the first year of the annual evaluation, I'm sorry, for the first year of teaching, or if actually in any time a teacher has an ineffective rating, then for that next year, they would need to develop an individual development plan, so that they would know how to hone in the skills that they needed to really improve. In the, this is continuing still on the provisional. In addition, the teacher would need three consecutive evaluations rated as effective or highly effective, and required, and five years of employment before they can advance to tier two. So that's all in legislation as far as how teachers advance. If the teacher has three consecutive evaluation ratings as highly effective in four years of employment, they can move immediately into the second-tier licensure. They don't have to wait for the entire five years. And finally, you can review the provisional just once, but again, you must receive three consecutive effective or highly effective evaluation ratings. Otherwise, the certification, the teacher's no longer eligible for that. So that's the new tier one. In tier two, the professional, sorry, go ahead.
Who's responsible for giving the highly effective or effective ratings?
The local district. So it would be probably, it would be a building principal unless the district has negotiated something different.
Just a clarification, renew the provisional once. How many years then with that provisional then?
Three. Three. You would have one renewed for three years.
Good clarification. Okay, professional license, also valid for three years, must be renewed. Cannot be, a teacher can't move there unless they've completed the provisional, but remember, they can also have a little bit of a fast track to finish the provisional early. In order to be renewed, evidence of at least two consecutive evaluation ratings as either effective or highly effective, and also the completion of the six semester hours or 18 state board CEUs, or the combination thereof that you have seen for a number of years, built into the certification. And then also, participation in 25 days of district professional learning over five years. That's in reflection of the state requirement that all districts provide teachers five days of professional development every year. So we're trying to make sure we've got some of the professional learning lined up, so hopefully they're better coordinated. And in a tier three, which is the advanced professional, this is totally voluntary. A teacher can stay with a professional license for their entire career as long as they continue to get professional learning and meet the requirements for the renewal. There's no requirement whatsoever. So if a teacher does want to demonstrate, they're ready to move into that teacher leader role, and when we recognize for that, they can do this by renewing, I'm sorry, for applying for the advanced professional certificate. This can be obtained by the National Board, which many of you are very, very familiar with, but also, we wanted to give some option that if, if there are other really well-recognized programs that are rigorous and provide a performance-based assessment, that that could also be proposed for the state superintendent to approve that as another vehicle or another means to also get to the tier three. And as I said, it really focuses on teacher leadership. Again, renewal depends on having two consecutive evaluation ratings, the six semester hours, the 18 hours, et cetera. So some of the same requirements for renewal as in the first one, but we certainly hope that a teacher moving into this arena would be able to demonstrate, maybe providing some of the professional development instead of just participating in some of that professional development when they reach that next tier. That's it. Some of the advantages of their third tier, again, it's optional, it's totally voluntary, but it does recognize that expertise, demonstrates for that teacher a level of mastery that we've not been able to acknowledge without this certificate. And really, again, the teacher leader and can be also, not just in the district, but as a state resource for us, very similar what our mission network of educators has done, that really provides us a good vehicle for having teacher leaders that we can access when we are looking for advice. That, Mike?
Nancy?
On the page seven of your handout, the last slide where you talk about the two-tier, tier two, excuse me, tier two professional education certificate, the last bullet, you're talking, and again, over on tier three, you're talking about the CEUs or six semester hours that are to be completed. I don't see anywhere in here, and I thought we had a long discussion about the need for this, that these hours were needed to, at least in part, if not in total, be tied to the needs identified in their annual evaluations, so as they're not just going out and taking something that, while may be very valuable and interesting, may not be worthwhile in terms of having them be more successful in their profession. Did we take that out?
There is something, but I think that's also something we're going to see that's going to be strengthened. There's some real interest in the legislature of making sure that even though every teacher's not required to have an individual development plan right now, those individual development plans should be based on what does the evaluation show that you needed, and also what the school improved, the building school improvement plan. So there is something, I think, I don't know if it's in rule or legislation, that the professional development needs to be tied to the teachers.
Content areas and roles. That is tied to what they're teaching, but in legislation, under the evaluation pieces, they would have to have that individualized development plan to focus in on what the areas of need are, where do they need to improve.
Well, I understand that, but I'm taking that one step further to saying then what counts towards this, let's see, make sure I get this right, six semester hours or 18- counts towards their, let's see, make sure I get this right, six semester hours or 18 CEUs. That those be, I mean, you could have an individualized development plan and have those classes be totally separate, and what I'm looking for is the linkage.
Yes.
Yeah, and that is an administrative rule.
Okay, thank you.
And even in the document itself, it says the credits or SBC CEUs earned with the continuing requirement must be relevant to the teacher's work as a teacher.
That's where the rule.
But the individual teacher chooses which professional development activities they're forced to complete. And then, earlier than that, it says that the professional certificate, I lost my turn on top, anyway. Nancy's right. I personally would like to see this more strongly woven together, because so many other things in here are very tight. This one is just not as strong as we've talked about it. Not that strong in writing.
John? I'm talking about, see, a couple of points. Similarly, I think we called for, and then the governor asked us, to have the CEU earning linked to the skills you need to improve student achievement. And I think that's part of what I hope we can continue to follow through on. Similarly, I thought to Richard's question, teacher evaluation, doing that well is going to be a function of the governor's commission and the process of developing an even more thoughtful teacher evaluation system linked to the tenure reform. So, I hope we can all, as we talked about last meeting, encourage that teacher evaluation design to be as supportive, thoughtful, objective, and multidimensional, as we talked about last time. I really wanted to flag, I mean, all of these things, we've been trying to, as a department, superintendent, board, breathe life into these teacher quality, administrator quality, improvement efforts. And the third tier, I mean, the master teacher opportunity is so important, obviously, a tough one, before in my view, because we can, if we breathe life now into this opportunity, now that we're getting it defined, it can provide the avenue for so many of our teachers to stay in the classroom, get recognition, up their skills, and be the mentors to new teachers, to be the evaluators of other teachers, and to improve student achievement. Because, you know, these master teachers are the key to improving achievement gains. And, you know, I have always been chagrined that, you know, the National Board certification process, which is a good way, which is discussed here, of upping the game and recognizing master teachers. It was invented in Michigan. We have 380 National Board certified teachers. North Carolina has 18,000 National Board certified teachers, in part because they, state leadership, governor, said, "We're going to help pay for National Board certification." Costs $3,000. And some districts in Michigan are paying for it. We, you know, this is a strong area where I'm going to be encouraging us as a state, we want to invest in things like this, because this is the way we can get more teachers rewarded, satisfied, and help deliver the good. We have 381, according to their website.
At risk of bragging a little, the first ones were all either Farmington or Wayne Risa. Literally, because we just did kind of what John said, and then moved over to Wayne, actually gave scholarships out to districts to try to get them through that. Kathleen?
I agree with what John was saying. This task, this study group that I'm on for NASB, I think I mentioned that we've had teachers coming in, and they really would like to be master, considered master teachers, and be able to stay in the classroom, or be in the classroom half a day, and mentor other teachers half a day, and things like that. So, that's really, I think that's really good. And I assume, but I want you to tell me if I'm right in my assumption, that since this group that you had working on this was co-chaired by people from the MEA and the MFT, or the AFT, that the two organizations are supportive of this proposal?
Yeah. I think they're a thing that they are supportive of.
Although I think they clearly said they weren't in support of some of the legislation, which is now inherently in this, just because of that.
But the legislation is there now, so now they're okay with this?
We, I mean, we took the committee's recommendations to Mike, and the legislation happened, so then we have aligned it now with the legislation. We have not asked for an endorsement, again, of the.
And again, it's voluntary, and I think John's points about whether or not districts use this, I think that was thoughtfully stated, because if districts use this with their teachers properly, this is going to finally end that idea that I have, it's cultural almost, but that I have to be an assistant principal if I somehow feel like I have to be promoted. You know, it's a cultural thing, where, wait a minute, I can stay teaching the rest of my life. Many, most teachers still feel that way. You can be a teacher and feel honored about it. But there's something about having this other designation, that this allows a lot of creativity at a district level for what that should look like. This is just a framework. And, you know, I mean, I think if I were back in that situation again, and working with the board and the teachers' group, I'd want to try to figure out creative ways to really maximize on that framework for a master teacher, probably in pay. This doesn't require pay, but I would think about it in terms of pay, probably in terms of incentives for getting the National Board certified. But again, it leaves the fluidity to local districts to decide. And a lot of groups were on that group, by the way. I mean, it wasn't just the teachers' groups, obviously, so we tried to take as best as all their thinking. Paul, please.
And I think, too, when we look at this and what's happening in the landscape of education, I can speak specifically what's happening in my district with teacher leadership. And we have a lot of different opportunities for teachers within the four technical campuses that we serve there, where teachers are feeling just exactly that. They can stay in the classroom, and I feel that way as well. Where you're able then to work collaboratively with others, you're able to work with the ascending districts, in our case, where there can be that collaboration. And I think it's very powerful, because then the teachers feel, and I think administration as well. I can sense that, you know, when that collaboration occurs, it's really just the bottom, at the end of the day, what do we do to help students achieve? And so, if the teachers have things that they can bring to the table, and administrators can work together collaboratively with that, I think it's a win-win situation for everybody, but more importantly, the students. Because then the teachers then are able to have that impact and that empowerment, because they have a say, if you will, on some of those committees and some that they're in charge of, that they need to, you know, need to move forward. So, I think that's very powerful, coming from a classroom situation.
Any other?
Just a quick question around the provisional certificate. So, there's a three-year renewal, and you've got to, during that renewal period, achieve an effective or highly effective rating each of the three years. If in the first year you don't, you're ineffective, are you done then at year six? Or is it the three years regardless?
Well, if you don't that first year, you're probably done. I mean, the license is valid for three years, once you renew it, and you have those three years. There's no way, if you don't get it in the first year, there's no way that you're going to make three years after that, so.
All right, so you can't, right? I mean, you only have three years, and you've got to do it. But I'm just conceiving of a situation where I don't achieve, so I'm ineffective in my sixth year.
Yeah.
And I've got to go out and find another job, whatever, right?
No, you can't, you can't even, I mean, you could find another job, but.
Not as a teacher. I'm saying, I've got to start a different career, right?
Okay, right.
I've got to continue to pay bills, and so, I'm going to stick around and continue teaching in years two and three.
If the district will have you. Now, it depends, you've got to remember that there's also other laws that come into play with this, we're aligned to those laws. And it says that the law on evaluation says that if you get an ineffective or minimally effective rating after one year, a district could terminate you. So, if you're in year six, and you only had the two years before you were ineffective, well, at this year, if you're ineffective, you must be terminated. You can only get three, if you're rated ineffective over three years, you must be terminated. So, we were allowing that that person who got the last two years, or that last year, their fourth and fifth year as effective or highly effective, that then, okay, they could renew, and that first year, they get that effective rating, then they could be moved on, you know. So, that was why we put that, built that three-year renewal in there.
I get that. I just, I'm thinking about, so best-case scenario and worst-case scenario. It's immediately where lawyers' minds go to, um.
Right.
Regrettably. Or not, I mean, frankly, we need them. But I just want to make sure that worst-case scenario, we're not allowing for folks who demonstrated over time, you know, this is not the right career path, to remain in the classroom in years seven and eight, because it's a, you know, automatic three-year kind of renewal.
Right. And again, that would be a district kind of, part of, would be a district, part of is mandated.
I'm not mistaken, over half of the evaluation is based on principal or whatever's negotiated other than student growth. Forty percent student growth, did I miss?
Increases over three years.
Yeah.
So, eventually, it's 50%.
Up to. Yeah. So, I think, you know, we've talked about this before. I mean, I think there were pieces of this we probably all could name that we might not have put this way in the law, but it is what it is. So, bottom line is, we tried to integrate it as best we could into this three-tier thinking.
So, what's the schedule, the timeline for this now, Mike?
Help me with that.
2013, we've got to add some pieces to our new database that will accommodate the three-tier system, and so, that's going to take some additional programming that has to be done. So, I believe we're looking at an effective date of, I believe, September 1, 2013.
Okay.
Because we're going to have to spend this year just trying to get the database up to speed and be able to do all of this.
And then, the hope is that.
So, we don't have to approve anything here, we just, this is just a presentation?
Information.
Information, yeah.
And I think what this will do with that timeline also is let districts start, kind of in the spirit that Paul described, think about how they want to utilize that, and start building a system, or contract language, or whatever it may be around that particular issue that would then be available in '13. Doesn't mean they have to wait till '13 to be thinking about how they want to take advantage of it. Okay, thank you guys very much.